First of all, thank you everybody for coming tonight. We're Larry Hayes, good news Baptist Church with the invocation, followed by Greg Martin, Fledge of Lethers, Lee Stinging, thank you.
Father, it's good to be in your presence, but it's so much better for you to be in our presence to guide us and direct us and address the decisions of this great county Lord. We ask you to bless these commissioners and all their decisions, leave with through our wisdom. And Father, we ask tonight that you would look down upon all our departments and employees throughout our county Lord and grant them safety and prosperity in all that they do. And Father, we're thankful tonight to have in our presence, young lady, Ms. Bladenborough, we ask you to bless her life before we guide and direct her that she will bring honor to our county as we know that she will. We ask these things in Christ Jesus' name and all of God's people, amen.
A pleasure to visit to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on agenda, a motion to approve consent on this.
Motion to second.
Mr. Smith and Mr. Peterson second it. Uh, into discussion. Into discussion, all approved, aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Um, matters of interest to commissioners. Anyone want to speak about things that concern you? Okay, individuals, relegations wishing to bless commissioners at this time, come forward, please. If I want you, Mr. Allen. Okay, good.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
It is my distinct pleasure to be with you this evening and bring to you one of the two young ladies who will be representing Bladenborough and Bladen County at the Miss North Carolina pageant in June. Um, I'd like to introduce to you our Miss Bladenborough's outstanding team, Anna Grace Allen.
It's nice to meet you all.
Anna Grace is representing Bladenborough officially and as such, representing Bladen County. She is also, her big sis, big pageant sis, is Haven Jolie Cashwell. Haven is a freshman at NC State studying meteorology, so she's been having a good last month with this weird weather we've had, we've been grilling her heavily on that. Anna Grace, I'll let you tell a little bit about yourself to the commissioners.
Well, I go to Grace Street High School, I'm in the ninth grade and I am about to be fifteen years old in April. Uh, some of the things that I enjoy doing other than pageant is singing, which was my talent at Miss Bladenborough. And specific genre in vocal is opera. I love singing opera, the one that I sing, the one that I sing and that I will be singing at Miss North Carolina South City team is Odell, Neil, Bill, stay on door. And that's my favorite one that I've ever sung.
Anna Grace won in October, she and Haven were crowned in October and since then, Bladen County's name has been all over this state. Uh, there haven't been too many weekends, I would dare say, since about, uh, about early December that these girls have not been somewhere walking across the stage saying, "I'm Miss Bladenborough, Miss Bladenborough's outstanding team, representing the people of." And so, that's pretty special, we think. Third week of June, June 23rd through the 26th will be the competition day. And you will hear more about it, we, both of these young ladies have social media sites that they maintain to keep up with what they're doing. And we will keep you informed because we hope to have your support, both emotionally, spiritually, and we'd love to have a dollar or two from Bladen County and say, "I'm not real, I'm not real thirty," you know, just a few, just a few. But the expenses of taking these two young ladies are pretty high. It's right out of a thousand dollars just to have the two of them compete that week for the fees on top of the franchise fee for Miss Bladenborough to be part of the Miss North Carolina process. So, we would love for you to consider throwing a little financial support behind these young ladies as they travel to Raleigh. And by all means, please lift them up in your prayers. These two young ladies are strong Christian young women, um, which is not necessarily a prerequisite for the Miss North Carolina or Miss America program, but here from our Bible Belt perspective, we certainly think it's a big feather in the cap.
Very proud of them.
Yes, indeed. Um, thank you very much and, uh, would you like to?
I'm going to ask a question.
Yes, please do.
Okay, um, in the Miss America organization, there are four points of the Miss America framework, style, scholarship, service, success. Service is when you have to have your own personal platform, some people do schooling, some people do cyber surfing, like my Ms. Haven, she does, "Think before you think, think before you think." Mine is one that I came up with my own, it's called Sock It Tour, and would you believe that socks are the most needed item in a homeless shelter? That's what we do, is we collect socks, my family helps out, my church helps out, and when we get a big sock donation, we'll go to the homeless shelter and instead of just giving it to them, I'll go help out in the soup kitchen, we'll serve them meals, we'll talk to them, and then we'll give them the socks at the end of the meal. And just to see their smiles and their appreciation, that's why I made this my platform.
Beauty, brains, and service, full package. Thank you all.
Thank you, very much, thank you, thank you.
We, yeah, we can, uh, we'll put it on agenda next meeting for somebody.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
This is all it meant, it's asked to the, to the.
Okay, Travis Smith, come forward, thank you.
Very well, thank you for letting me speak. I want to thank you all for your service, I know it's a hard job, can't imagine what you guys have to go through on a daily basis, and you serve our county well and I appreciate that. Um, Mr. Bullock, he just helped a friend of mine, James Fox, I appreciate that. You know, I know you guys do little things that nobody knows about and I just appreciate that. Um, I am concerned though, because, um, I went to the polls this week, or last week, whenever it was started for early voting, and I found out about this pack that's the Bladen Prisoner Pact, and I think that three of the commissioners are on that pack, if I'm not mistaken. And my, and I spoke with Commissioner Bullock about this, my concerns as a property owner, um, you know, we've tried to pass the sales tax, this will be the fourth time, and our schools need help desperately, um, our EMS needs help desperately. Uh, and I don't think that it's fair for the property owners to have to sit the deal all the time. And so, the commissioners, I was proud of you guys for putting it on the ballot, but then I was disappointed because when I go out to the polls, I see our commissioners out there, um, trying to persuade people to vote against the sales tax again. Um, and this is the fourth time that the pack has put it on the ballot to vote against this sales tax. So, I don't know, and it was, my mouth dropped open, um, when you said that you didn't have confidence in the Board of Commissioners. I mean, if you don't have confidence in your board, what does that mean to Bladen County? And, and I spoke with Mr. Horstman, the president of this pack, and, um, was talking with him about the Board of Education, and he said that he didn't have confidence in the Board of Education to spend the money wisely. What is that saying about our county? We need to work together, we need to come up with solutions together, and, you know, we're not always going to agree, we're going to disagree, but, and I know I was at a training with you all and James Maynard, I think, said that, you know, as commissioners, you guys should work together, you're not going to agree, but whatever the board decides, then you all support each other in that decision as a united front. And I don't see that happening, and it concerns me. So, my question is, why don't you support the sales tax? The members of the pack?
You want my response?
Yes, thank you. Sure.
I support, as a commissioner, I supported putting it on the ballot because I believe in social justice, that every citizen in Bladen County should have his right to vote their conscience and what they think is right. But until this board decides how that money is going to be spent. I'm against it one time, I was against it the second time, I was against it the third time, I'll be against it the next time. I lay in a car accident for forty minutes needing an ambulance. Tomorrow morning, I have to see a newer shirt, my back is unutterably fat, but if Bladen County cannot set priorities and decide that that money, it goes to two of our most eyes and knees, which is education and the young there. In my opinion, I'm a member of the pack, I'm proud of it. I voted against it, I'm proud of it, and I'm encouraging everybody that I can encourage to keep all voting against it until we can commit ourselves as to how it's going to spend. Now, some of the commissioners talked about reducing the property tax if we'll support the sales tax, but there's no money in doing that. Our needs are too great here in this county to implement one pack and reduce the other. I got wrote up about it, but I'm proud of it. I am a strong supporter of education, and will continue to be. The direction the education has taken, I do not agree with it. And the response time for EMS and the section which I live, I disagree with it, we can do better. Now, the voters have spoken that they're chose, but until we can sit down and get together and set the ground, I can make some steps to make, I'm proud of my record.
Yeah, I need your response too, because I remember that same pack. And when we discussed that tonight, when we put it on the board, we gave specifics on how we wish for that to be implemented and what we want done. That we want EMS, those in schools, and some to go to economic, we asked for that specifically. And said, "We would love for it to be done," and I spoke with the manager, "Now, put enough money in the board," and I said, "Same thing, that I will support it a hundred percent if you will specify specifically what you're going to do with the money." We sit here and talk about the board does change, we don't ask it for any concern. They just did stuff and we now know what they're doing.
You're a board member?
No, the school board, they move in matter, you didn't know they was moving matter. So, in fact, you said, "Well, how in hell?" I have been to other commissioners in other counties, and I asked them, and we failed two times, and I asked, "How do they have that act?" They all have said that they gave resolution and specifically delegated that money as to where to go and for a spin for a dime. Some of them went for five years, some of them for ten years. But they were, "We back, look at it, and we allocate that money again." But they said, "Every time it's been passed, it's all been passed thirty-nine times, I've been talking about a hundred fifty tries with different counties." And every one of those guys said they had to be very specific and precise as to where that money was going and how it was being used, and all to get it passed. I spoke that record board that night and requested that we do that. Yes, I'm a member of the pack, and until we specify, and tell me what you're going to do, because people ask me, "What you're going to do with the money?" "We're going to give it to the school." "What the school going to do with it?" "I don't know." None of us know. School is going to be with, nobody has specified what they're going to do with the money. We sit here, we bow to our EMS, trying to figure out how to find EMS. Tell them specifically what you're going to do, and so when the tax comes, ask me, "What are you going to do with my money?" I can tell them what this commission is doing. We can come in here at the vote, this commission can specify, "No, if you want that money to be allocated, and it is not used for that purpose, this commission can put that money in an escrow fund in that city, and they cannot use it until they do what's allocated, do it." That's the law, that's how all of them done it. They put the money in specific categories, and until they do that, I will not support it. I want the way it must go, so someone asks me, "Where is it going? How's it going to be spent?" I can say, "This is what the intent and purpose of this money is." Not to this thing out there, say, "School board getting two hundred dollars a month, do what, fix all that building, build new schools, hire new staff, give the room space a lot of increase, tell me what you're going to do with the money." Once you can be that specific, I told them back here a year ago, when they came up and spent a bit of, I was a point one hundred percent, "If you tell me what you're going to do with that money." And they have yet to do that, and I'll do that, and I'll not support it. As a member of the pack, I'll listen to myself as a board member, and give them a pack, I will support it.
Okay, by all, Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Bullock wants to respond, I want to finish this conversation up, so I'll hold it. My, my, I introduced a motion that night, we were talking about that, to have a referendum signed by the commissioners, and how the money is specifically being used. My thought order was to be used for EMS and the school system. I believe if we use it for EMS and the school system, everyone benefits from that. Uh, I think that if we use it for school, then that would benefit the future of Bladen County, bring up the educational system. Anytime you bring up the educational system, man can get a better job, he can really do better for himself. And I, in my opinion, the most needed areas are EMS and the schools. I work in EMS, we need more equipment, more employees to cut down on response time. And Dr. Blanks already mentioned the response time that she had when she had her accident. So, to me, EMS and the school system is the most important thing, and I think everybody benefits from that. That's, that's the reason, and like I said, I introduced a motion here to pay it to EMS and the schools, and it was defeated. So, I'm for schools and EMS. I've been with EMS since nineteen seventy-eight, and I've seen a lot of changes in it, we need new equipment, closing, EMS is important, and everybody benefits from EMS and the school system. Everybody. You know, I don't totally discuss with them, they say it. They sit there and feel that, I'm surprised you didn't see the smoke they put in this room. I don't know how much clearer you can be, the first three times we tried it for capital improvements, to give that money, go straight to capital improvement for schools. If this Board of Commissioners wants to be on the Board of Education, they need to resign for here and run the Board of Education. We are elected to serve this county as a commissioner, and we are not elected to serve as a Board of Education member.
That was my response to.
And as far as EMS, we raised, we put a penny sales tax, property tax, this past year, if I ain't badly mistaken, to take care of EMS. I mean, they can blow this smoke off the oomph tube, they just blowing smoke. And it's the best thing that ever happened, these, and I've heard him, Cogdell told me he wasn't going to do nothing that supported the rich. Well, the rich, what he calls the rich, has been paying these bills in this county for...
Mr. Charles, very pleased.
No, no, I got the phone straight.
Blanks, talk to Blanks, nobody interrupt you. Nobody interrupt you now, let Ms. Peterson talk, please.
All right, let me talk, it's my time.
It's your time.
Huh? Please.
You're not, you no time, allow me.
That's enough, that's enough. You got a bump in there, call the law, we'll get him out of here. But the thing is, the thing is, evidently, if you ask Mr. Cogdell and Dr. Blanks and Mr. Bullock how they want to spend the money, and if you, if you do what those three want to do, then they'd pass it, but what about the other six commissioners sitting here? I mean, you have to go on majority rules, and that's the way you're supposed to govern this, this Board of Commissioners.
Let me speak. Let one talk at a time.
Let me talk, this minute.
I'll, I'll speak for a minute.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Cogdell.
Uh, I'm, I'm listening to what you're saying, you're talking out both sides of your mouth. When we came in here back last year to look at this tax increase, we sat down, Mr. Payton and all of us, and let's do six point two or something like that. You stood right here and said, "No, please, let's go ahead and do this eight cent."
You got one vote.
Wait a minute, you said, "Let's do this eight cent." You dogged everybody to do that eight cent sales tax, so we can take care of EMS and all the other things that we need to do. And you dogged everybody on that to get that done. Then you turn around and make them look like a bunch of nuts and say, "We're going to give them back two cents." If that's the case, why do we get the eight cent from the store? You the one came here and raised all that fuss about getting eight cents off the tax. You the one did that. Don't put that on my list, you did that.
And Mr. Chairman, may I say, I did not labor, Mr. Peterson. He say, "I'm here blowing smoke." Why does he sitting up there blowing? When I had to lay up on a car accident for forty minutes waiting on an ambulance, is that smoke?
You come up here with that eight cent off the tax, you, nobody else but you.
Wait a minute, now. Let's take it, let's go around town. Go ahead, I'm coming back in a minute, Ms. Chairman, let me say something.
I heard it. Mr. Bullock's got the floor.
Okay, I don't know what Charles is talking about once he on the Board of Education, because I don't know what he's talking about, blowing smoke. I, I don't agree with that, but the thing about it though, our most need, in my opinion, is EMS and schools. That's my opinion, I have the right to report my opinion.
Opinion, that's right. Without labeling people.
Which phrase?
Out of all who's thinking.
The thing, the point I was trying to make here is, we've had three opportunities to help education, and all three times the packs have been against it. So, if education's so important, why didn't we support it the first three times, and we wouldn't even be here the fourth time, trying to get it passed again to help the property owners? We, I'll say this again, we increased the property tax one cent for EMS. We've done that this past budget, and I just appreciate the opportunity that I am so powerful that I control everybody that goes on this board unless it's Mr. Cogdell.
And I remember, excuse me, I remember the first two.
My opinion is Bladen County.
The first two times we had to spend it, put it on education, I remember that. The first two times, education.
Yeah, we have.
It was defeated by.
Do better, and I'm working for better. And nobody tells me which board I want to be on.
My concern is that it seems that this pack has a lot of power, and...
It does.
I know it does.
It makes sense, doesn't it?
I know.
We need to work together cooperatively to do it, but then when one is going to belittle another without respect, and Mr. Peterson intends to become Prince Charles, rather than Commissioner Charles, who thinks he has the right to call us, what happened, publicly.
Let's don't get personal, please.
That's right. And I think, Mr. Chairman, you need to call us all out, that's what I have to say. I respect you, and you've got to respect me.
Thank you, without, without, just start that right now, thank you.
I would just like to say that I feel like this pack has a lot of power, and I would like to see the sales tax pass so that we can make improvements that Bladen County needs. I don't understand why this pack can work together, but our Board of Commissioners cannot. It seems unacceptable, unacceptable, wouldn't it mean? It seems that we bicker over things that don't matter and don't get to the real issue, so I would encourage you to work together and to find a solution to these problems that we have, and it's been going on for years, and we haven't a solution. And I know that some of you have been on these boards for years, we need change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next agenda, we got Jeff Finnegan, Executive Vice President of Bladen Community College, going to have a couple of items to go over there.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, Dr. Phin was unable to be here tonight, he's had some minor outpatient surgery and was not able to be here. However, he has updated you on a couple of occasions, if I'm not mistaken, about our EDA grant. And, um, most of you know that we applied for an EDA grant, it's a one point three million dollar grant, and at the same time, we were applying also for Golden Leaf Grant, which that was five hundred thousand dollar grant, to build an advanced manufacturing building, um, over campus of Bladen County College. I'm pleased to inform you tonight that we have been approved for the EDA grant, the one point three million dollar, um, grant. Uh, we also were approved for the Golden Leaf Grant, which that's a five hundred thousand dollar grant. Um, so, um, we just want to present that to you tonight, I think there's a financial assistance award, you probably have that in your agenda, I think that's ready. And, uh, that highlights, uh, the amounts there, the one point three million EDA, the five hundred thousand for the, um, from the Golden Leaf alone with, uh, fifty thousand from the county, ten thousand for local businesses, and local businesses that we have worked with, the community one hundred will be giving, um, two thousand, the four counties will be giving three thousand, and, um, I think that's it. Local companies will be given two thousand, four counties three thousand, and the five thousand is coming from community one hundred students, that's equal to two thousand there. So, a total of five hundred sixty thousand with the one point three millions, the one point eight million dollar building, and, uh, we're just looking for your approval for this consideration, rather, for financial assistance award that you have in your package.
Second. Uh, Ms. Peterson made a motion, Mr. Bullock seconded it. Lost the pleasure to the board.
Question.
Go ahead. Discussion board, this question, we had a discussion.
I'm going to discuss it off the court.
Okay. Are there any favors, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it, but passes.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Uh, Revenue Department, Renee Davis, come forward, please, we've got an item up here we need to discuss it.
Evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. The county of Bladen will hold on three parcels of land previously owned by Veron G. Norma Estate. The county's expense was eleven thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. Dennis Williams was the first offer, a bid request of eleven thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars. And then Asia Goods, who has an illegal interest in the property, requests a private sale, um, for the same amount of the county's expense. And both individuals have paid the five percent deposit, and I'm just asking the board to either accept the upset bid from Dennis Williams or go to a private sale from Asia Goods.
Are you finished?
I just want to say one thing. Whichever way, I do recommend, however, whatever voted upon, that it would be a balance to be paid within thirty days.
Okay. We've got, um, Mr. Cogdell Goods, what do you want to say?
I've made a motion that we do it, the private sale, and extend it for sixty days because from assessing the property and only looking at it, I think that the property's not a place, not value like, and I'd like for it to be extended to sixty days so that that can take place and let the owner of the private sale, or carry the sixty million things back, and get sixty million.
of the private sale, our charity, extend it to 30 days.
I was approached about this property, and I don't have no problem, I think it should go to the family. And I was asked to give him nothing more than, I was asked that he might need 90 days to get the law.
I'd go 90 days.
So, I don't have no problem doing a 90 day on it because of his family and the way the banks and stuff operate, I don't have no problem doing 90 days if you adjust your motion.
I'll make my motion, and I'm...
I'm seconding it.
And Mr. Peterson seconded it. Okay.
That's the way we normally do it, family.
That's to Asia Bush.
Got a second, a motion. Any discussion on this item? Any discussion at all? Are those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes handed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Renee. On the next item, we've got a juvenile crime prevention council, consists of five members. We have a motion.
I got a recommendation that we'll point, Flips, Lewis, Joey, Todd, Leon, Graham, and Chris Hunt, and Ms. Johnis is...
She said, and we don't go with it.
And let's get in contact with her, and we'll make that point on a later date.
Motion, Mr. Peterson, who's second? Mr. Peyton, I heard him first. Those, any discussion? What was the name Charles that you recommended?
We're going to get with Ms. Johnis when she gets out of the room, and then we'll bring that back to the board. We need to stagger those terms. Can you add that in, motion to stagger those terms, so I don't come and do it one time?
Mr. Chairman, it's actually proposed in the...
I'm sorry.
... three seventeen to eighteen.
That's good.
Okay, this vote now, approve, aye? Opposed, no? Motion carries. On number eight, item eight, we beat my for y'all of March 21st meeting, we've got some more performance, board hearings, meetings, of course, some more board members. Next item, Mr. Greg Martin, County Manager, is going to come up and talk to us a little bit about the items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad to be able to give you the calendar with you for the months of March and April. On March 10th at 7:00 p.m., the Bladen Fire Association meeting will be held in Bladen Park, at the community building there. And then offices will close on Friday the 25th, in accordance of the Good Friday of the East Hall there. Moving over to April, there will be a prayer service at 8:00 a.m. on Monday the 4th. The board meets later that evening at 6:30 p.m. The Bladen Fire Association meeting will be held on the 14th at the Memorial Fire Department. The Board of Commissioners meets on the 18th at 6:30 p.m. And there is a preliminary president meeting scheduled for Monday the 25th. There is not a time that has been established for that meeting, Mr. Chairman, so the board would like to schedule a time for that meeting.
Now, pleasure to the board.
Monday, 25th, April.
It'll be six o'clock. I said it. Maybe six o'clock.
Smith made the motion, Mr. Peterson seconded it. Any discussion about that?
Six, wasn't it?
No. No problem. Those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Item number 10, be sure that we discuss it, promise. Next item?
Chairman, if you could go back and do this at item B, please.
Okay.
Also, at our last meeting, there was a discussion about having a meeting earlier than, in the month of April, or earlier than April, 25th. And so, it's also recommended that the board consider scheduling a meeting for March 29th, that's a Tuesday, at a time that's considered for...
You want to do it 28? We're running in... Somebody took up earlier, but not... Or Russell got a conflict, 29. 29. 29. Chairman's got a conflict.
What is 31st? 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 Did anybody meet that 31st?
31st and 3rd?
What day you say?
March 31st.
31st.
We've got a motion?
Seven o'clock.
Your motion?
Make a motion at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, the 30th?
The 31st.
31st.
Budget here.
Budget here.
Budget works out.
We've got a motion?
Second.
Dr. Blanks made a motion, Mr. Bullock seconded it. Any discussion?
What time are you?
Seven. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Bullock. You got to get supper.
You want to meet earlier? Seven o'clock, fine.
Six, better?
Six o'clock, babe? Six o'clock, fine.
That's 6:00.
That's 6:00.
All right, change it to 6:00, Greg.
And he said we can't agree on anything. We agree on 6:00.
Yeah. Any discussion at all? Yes, none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Next item is adjournment.
I still adjourned.
Motion by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Bullock.
I'm sorry.
Okay, pardon you, I'm sorry.